Well, he's advertising.
Uh, no, I just want to ask, okay? Thank you.
Well.
I think if you have a glory, you should have to walk up.
Oh.
They'll stop. That wasn't bad.
How many years?
Last year. Yeah, right. Before Christmas.
You all are.
Too busy.
Yes.
Uh, my grandma lives out there.
I just thought we were in soccer, Kate, we got locked up. So is that scary?
And maybe having some like real kind of tradition drills.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Would you please join me in the. The first order of business this evening is action on minutes. To see what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of the minutes from the meeting held on June 16th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Can I do second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of the minutes remaining held on June 16th, 2025? And then opposed or staying?
Unstaying, uh, less than either.
In all the cases more present. Passes. Next, look at from the public. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Moving on to board member comments. Are there board members that would like to speak this evening?
Welcome to two new people. Really?
Any other board member comments?
Second of welcome.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the chairman's report, which I was going to start by welcoming the two new board members. We have Jared Connors from Newry and Leland Swain from Woodstock. Welcome aboard and welcome back, everyone else. If you haven't already, please make sure to complete your board member info sheets. There are some right on the table there. And which subcommittee you'd like to serve on, on the sheets. Little discrepancy, there are four subcommittees. Policy is standalone. If you're interested in serving on the policy committee, the expectation is that you would serve on two committees. Just a reminder that the MSMA Fall Conference is at the Augusta Civic Center on October 23rd and 24th. I won't say much, I think Mark is going to touch on it as well, but I just wanted to strongly encourage anybody who can go to go. Even if it's for a couple workshops, the whole conference, it's worthwhile and a good opportunity for professional development. And if approved, the last order of business for the board this evening will be an executive session to discuss personnel matter. At that point in time, members of the public will be asked to leave and the board will resume only to adjourn. And that concludes the chairman's report.
Is, is there anyone else that's not here? Is there only over 12 of us?
No.
We're missing a few tonight, yes.
Three, three, actually.
Fifty.
Fifty. Yep.
We are missing a few tonight.
Brian.
But it's no one new.
Brian, Meredith and Stephanie.
Okay.
For upcoming committee and board meetings, our next SAD 44 board meeting will be held on Monday, September 15th at 6:30 here at the Telstar Library. The Education Committee will meet Thursday, September 11th from 3:00 to 4:00 at the Norrie Stadium's Bank Conference Room. Finance Negotiations Committee will meet Tuesday, September 9th from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Central Office. Facilities and Personnel will meet just before our regular board meeting on Monday, September 15th at 5:15 to 6:15 in room 131 here at Telstar. And the Policy Committee will meet Monday, September 2nd at 10:00 a.m., also in room 131 here at Telstar. And the Region 9 Cooperative Board will meet Wednesday, September 3rd at 6:00 p.m. at the Region 9 School of Technology. Next, we have committee reports, which we will not hear this evening, where it's still in the process of putting those subcommittees together. Do you, oh true, do you have a report?
Yeah, Region 9, um, we met on, uh, last Wednesday, but we met several times over the summer trying to resolve the water issue. Several proposals made and soundly rejected by the fire chief, so right now those two buildings are going to be unoccupied. There was a question whether they're going to open up, um, the Colonniers Building because it doesn't require as much water, but. They turned it over to lawyers, lawyers looking into whether we need a signature or not because they can't find it in Mexico ordinances where down, uh, Odessa where they need a signature. Napa doesn't require it, Rumpa doesn't require it, so, so somebody's made a suggestion, made some phone calls and so the, so lawyers are looking into it now. As far as numbers, it's 284, which I guess is up for the, for the total. We've had to hire a couple of part-time ed techs to be in some of the classrooms that are over with this lately. And I think Telstar is 45, I believe the number was registered, which is about what it looks like here. But it's just those two buildings just sit there vacant and, and it's so ridiculous that the, the welding lab is, is a, a square box. I'm guessing now, but it's like 150 by 150. Okay, it has three, four, five doors that you can exit. It has two eight-foot doors that are overhead doors, garage doors. It has a 16-foot overhead garage door and two pedestrian doors. The kids, the chances are the kids will even get wet by the sprinklers by the time they get out of the building. And. Cause there's not enough water, it's not the safety of the kids anymore now, it's the, it's the actual lighting of the fire because they would run out when they go in there. Makes no sense to me.
So, so two, two buildings were built, two new buildings?
One is a lot smaller. One is a lot smaller and, yeah, and I'm not sure if they were, they were questioning whether they were moving to the, uh, the culinary house one, because it's a lot smaller building.
What were the buildings that declared substantially complete or turned to year?
January. There were, they were moved in February, they were moved in over February vacation, it's a plan.
What is the position of the fire guards? They want a bigger pipe going in?
The, the, the fire chief says they're not going to sign off until he gets a 25,000 gallon system located by, close to the road because they're on the end of the line. And this, this, the, I don't know how many houses are out between them and Dixfield, but those people would benefit from having a 25 gallon, 35,000 gallon tank out there. So he really wants it for the benefit of more than just Region 9.
Had a larger diameter pipe been installed?
The, the diameter pipe there is able to produce more water than they would ever need. It just doesn't for some reason.
Designed properly.
They looked, they, the TUC came in, they paid to have the engineer, they, they checked all the valves because it's like gobby amount of valves that they could have been stuck casually open, they just, the flow isn't there. And there's plenty of water.
That really went to planning board in Mexico.
Excuse me?
Uh, uh, I presume it's the planning board review, it's like plan review in Mexico.
The fire chief signed off on it.
Right, I mean, planning board is, one of the standards is to ensure sufficient fire protection.
You know Bethel ordinances?
I know all ordinances, yeah.
Do they need to sign on?
Well, there's, yeah, there's requirements, it's all done ahead of time. Typically in a planning board, it is approved of all sorts of things, everything, fire protection, everything's mentioned and, and specified. I'm just curious, I don't want to hold me, thank you. Keep fighting for the kids. You're, you're supposed to be a school, but in January, right? January.
January.
Diagnosis change.
Thank you, Matt. I will turn it over to Mr. Kenny for the superintendent's report and correspondence.
Thank you, good evening everybody, and again, welcome to, to the board members. Uh, it's been a busy summer since we last met in June, so bear with me as I go through a few, couple of HR. Appointments for the 2025-2026 school year, Claudia Charette, food service at Telstar High School, or Telstar Complex. Teresa Gibson, food service at Crescent Park. Coral Frazier, adult and community education clerk. Kaylee Brown, ed tech one position at Crescent Park in special ed. Heather Borsh, ed tech three, uh, Telstar Middle School Special Ed. Josh Elliott, ed tech three, Telstar Middle School Special Education. Tammy Widger, education technician, uh, Woodstock in special ed. Transfers, we have Mary Merrill, who's moved last year from the K5 user position to CPS grade one teaching position. Kirsten Mieda from Crescent Park Grade One to Crescent Park Title One Teacher. Shawna Chase from part-time Woodstock social worker to full-time Woodstock District Special Ed Social Worker. And Dee Robinson from Telstar Middle School to Telstar High School Special Ed Teacher. We have a couple of resignations, uh, since we were together in June. Beth Partt, Woodstock Teaching Principal Title One Teacher. Jimmy Codiero, Director of Special Education. Walter Inman, Woodstock Food Service. Steven McCrum, Speech Pathologist for the District. Amy Robinson, ed tech one at Crescent Park. Jenny Shaw, ed tech three at Telstar Middle School. And Amy Stevens, who was a district bus driver. Tonight is the first night for high school preseason for all of our sports teams. They're all outside having their parent meetings and first practices. But for our coaching slate for the middle school, boys head coach Nate Crocker and assistant coach Rory Smith. Girls head coach Greg Leche and assistant coach Emily Coffin. Head field hockey coach Morgan Richmond and assistant field hockey coach Mary Ann Wentworth. Cross country coach Kristy Hanscom. Student council, Deb Doyle. Yearbook, Suzie Gordon and Drama Club, Elaine Hutchins. In the high school, we have boys, uh, head soccer coach Nick Conrad and his assistant Scott Underhill. Girls head coach Katie Crocker and assistant Nick Connor, uh, Nick Johnson. Head field hockey, Gail White and assistant field hockey, Maya Taylor. Head field, head football coach, Tim O'Connor and assistant coach, Will Doyle. We still have one open assistant, uh, coaching position on the football team. Student council chaired by Tara Ingraham and Kelly Frazier. National Ice Society, Alka Bloss. FBLA, Morgan Richmond. Senior Class Advisor, Alka Bloss. Junior Class Advisor, Kristy Hanscom. Sophomore Class Advisor, Tara Ingraham and Freshman Class Advisor, Jonathan Erdy. Yearbook, Tara Ingraham, Math League, Dave Lynch, Drama, Alka Bloss and Interact Club, Jonathan Erdy. Crescent Park School, Fall Soccer, Crystal Gould and Student Council, Crystal Gould. And Woodstock Elementary, Student Council, Andrea Howe. All right, did everything? Make sure Mrs. Henderson's happy. There are other items later on in the agenda to approve and go through. As Aaron alluded to, the MSBA Delegate Assembly is coming up. There's a virtual meeting on Thursday, September 11th, uh, from 6:00 to 7:30. And then there's a virtual assembly meeting on Saturday, October 18th at 9:30 in the morning. Um, there's a attachment in your packet that came out with information about that. We do have to have a delegate and an alternate, um, selected to represent the district at that meeting. So we'll talk about that later in the agenda. As well as the MSMA Fall Conference, you don't have to go on that. But that is available to all board members and as Aaron said, it's a Thursday, Friday conference at the Augusta Civic Center. If you want to go to both days, um, and you let Robin know, she'll set hotel reservations for you. You can go to one day or both or part of the day. And they're all workshops, uh, focused around, uh, it's for board members and for superintendents and assistant superintendents. So there are all sorts of school safety, Drum and Woods does workshops, there are curriculum workshops, um, all the busing companies there trying to sell buses, there's software companies. There's all sorts of, um, vendors and different things to, to look at and take care of. Getting ready for the school year, checking things out. Yeah, lots of food, yeah. Yeah, they do cater very nicely. They have not put out a specific agenda yet, because it's in October. The superintendents have a separate conference on Wednesday that week. And then follows into the whole, whole conference. Teaching off the school year, teachers start on Monday and the kids start on Wednesday next week. So it is winding down very quickly. I won't lie, it is nice that the humidity is broken and we're down in the forties and fifties at night, the buildings are comfortable during the day and not sweating that. We had enough of that this summer. It was nice, it lasted, but it's not enjoyable when you're in school in the building for anybody. There's a lot of whining that takes place. I don't know who's more, the kids or the adults. But it does make it hard to come back. It's already hard enough as it is to get back in the team. To have weather like that is, uh, a little bit unbearable. We have had a lot of projects going on this summer. We've had a lot of staffing changes this summer. It's been very busy and very active. We had a quiet July, but August has been very busy. And we are close to, um, being fully staffed. Right now, we are short a second grade teacher at Woodstock, uh, an ed tech at Woodstock. And our eighth grade case manager slash IP coordinator position is open. We are down to three district bus drivers to start the school year. Uh, the district contracts, everything else we run through RideSource. We have plenty of bus drivers and buses, we just, we only have three drivers under our contract for this year as of right now. But there's been a lot of, as you can see in the agenda, a lot of moving and shaking going on this summer, a lot of positions. We're very lucky to have just a very small handful of physicians left still, um, compared to our neighbors around us. We've been very fortunate in that regard and we have applications waiting on some of the other physicians already, so we're hoping to get those all filled. What we are really short on is substitute teachers. Because we keep hiring them, the positions of the district, which is a great thing. But when it comes to substitute call list time, uh, the substitute call list is maybe four or five names long, it's pretty short to start the school year. So we are definitely looking for people interested and, and available to sub.
What, is there requirements and what's the pay and if we were going to try to?
So requirement, memory requirement is a high school diploma.
Okay.
Uh, they have to fingerprint it and have their CHRC and background check completed. We have in the past with Adult Ed cooperatively run new, for, uh, new substitute training classes. And we get a lot of people to come, but then a lot of people don't actually show up to sub, so it's more the PTA and just word of mouth, trying to get people to come in. Well, we try to encourage, if people are at all interested and they, even if they want to come in and just shadow and come in and check it out before they go through the process of paying the money, they go through the fingerprinting and everything else, if they want to come in. They can set up times, come in and just be an observer to sort of see what it's like. A lot of people, they're uncertain or they have, they hear the rumors or they think it's going to be something crazy and it's really not. But if that just helps them to make their mind up, we always offer that, um, as a way to come in and just sort of shadow for a half a day or a day in a variety of classrooms, so have a setting idea. They're allowed to pick which building level they want to be in. One of the things we always say about with substitutes is that they have the beauty to say, nope, I'm busy today and I can't, I'm not available. They're not locked into a set schedule. I'm trying to think, we just increased the pay last year to one. 140 without a teaching degree, I think, and it's one. 55 or 160 with a teaching degree, I think, we upped it last July, not last January. But I, I'll have to double check the problem to make sure. It had been under a hundred dollars for a long time and was up to 125, but with minimum wage keep creeping up, trying to stay ahead of that, so it's actually enticing for people to come in. They're usually in around 7:15 to 7:30. We ask them to be in around 7:15, make sure they're all set to check in for their job for the day. And then they're done when the kids have done, so between 2:30 and 2:45, um, is kind of what they're worked at. So those are, you know, where we're at. I also sent out to you on Friday, a separate email with all of the emergency plans that you have to approve tonight, it's an annual policy that you have to go through. This is our first year not contracting with Scott Parker anymore to oversee our emergency manage, management planning. Mrs. Moore has agreed to take on that role and help me in making sure that we have this. We went through the summer and did a lot of editing and cleaning up of the plans. We did not make a lot of wholesale changes. But we're going to use this next year to really look at and work with Oxford County EMA, who offers services for free for emergency planning with the schools. And we have a group of parents who have kids in the district who all work in different branches of law enforcement, who have been offering to serve as an advisory panel. So just to see, we know there's other options out there. We've had the same plan now for over 12 years, it's tweaked a little bit over time, but no big changes to it. And we are well versed in it. So we didn't make any crazy decisions, but we're going to look into options and just see if, what is the best option for us going forward. But one of the big changes is that our Sunday River is the reunification site for all schools, not just Telstar. So anytime we have to be evacuated and reunified, we will all go up to Sunday River and they are doing that, they are charged. They have everything in place, um, they have all the skills and the people and they are more than willing to take that on, which we appreciate, so it's consistent across the board. The only change would be if, uh, the freshman academy, TFA had to evacuate, they would come here. There's just one grade level, we only get to send them all the way up to Sunday River, just for one grade level. Those things are in place there. Our practice in place, most of the resources come from the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is from out west, it was started at the Columbine. And so their resources are free, they're online. We have all our posters and all the teachers are going to go through and their first staffings with the administration and just review some of the minor changes, updates. The kids have to do their drills every year. And they have the first two, have to be done in the first two weeks of school. So the administrators have gone through and made their schedules and have everything in place. We will still continue to work with Oxford County Sheriff's Department, Bethel Rescue and Bethel Fire for this building and Woodstock. Fire Department for the Woodstock building, for all of our drills, if they're able to send people, so they also, they use this practice as well. But we will have the control over what kind of scenarios we will run and what kind of drills they look like, um, this year going forward. If you notice, we've had a lot of projects and the first ones right here in the floor underneath us today is that the floor was finally done in the library. The rug, well, the rug's over 20 years old and Mrs. Frazier's been asking for 12 years to get the rug replaced. And so this was the, the space in this building that was designated. We did three more classrooms at Crescent Park, one classroom at Woodstock. Again, so we're picking away a little bit each year to, um, move away from carpeted classrooms. Custodians are finding it to be great in the summertime. It's much more efficient, we don't have to worry about molding over carpets trying to dry. And it's just easier, especially with the littles, when they're snapped and milk and everything going on, it, it just makes sense. The cafeteria at both Crescent Park and Woodstock that were done last year, that held up really well and survived all the high traffic that they were used and abused. So it bodes well for the material and the process of going through. We had interior painting done at both Crescent Park and Woodstock in classrooms and the office. Woodstock had carpet boards replaced, repaired and painted all around the roof. Let's see, we had playground chips of both Crescent Park and Woodstock installed. They came and lined and painted the track. We have all the driveways and parking lots sealed, crack filled and lined and it's been 10 years since that's been done in the district and it's very noticeable when you drive in. Let's see, what else? We had, we started the kitchen repairs and the plumbing in the Telstar kitchen. Uh, to repair the floor drain that the cast iron pipes, which had disintegrated and collapsed. So they're now able to use their bathroom and the kitchen, the cut, the workers are. That was a, um, a unique hole. It was four foot by four foot by four foot, through the concrete, three layers of conduit and rock to get to the cast iron pipes. And that's the entire, this entire building is cast iron. Original cast iron, um, from 1968. So, um, the company who came and helped scope and work with our land is, we're going to try to work with them to try and start. Scoping the entire building and get a sense of what our prognosis is for the future and we're going to start picking away at some of these things. But it's a multi-layered process because. Other than this main hallway floor here, all of our tile hallways are asbestos tiles. So if we have to take up the floors either piping, we've got to do asbestos abatement and then put down the boards afterwards. Which not a bad project to have done, but just adds to the time and layers and the cost. Let's see, we have a lot of groundwork going on outside. They started working on the baseball field at Crescent Park today behind the gym and trying to fix the washouts on the hill and the stairwell along the middle school baseball field. Some landscaping projects, all the buildings have been trimmed up and mulched and weeded and there's two projects still here, Telstar, they're going to be done, the island down below, they're going to change the sign and move it around. And re-landscape the island, about a five hole here. We've had a lot of dead trees trimmed at all three campuses, uh, removed and trimmed back. And the last ones to be done are up on the baseball field, Crescent Park, taking some of the pine trees back on the third base side, which are all done, okay. Which were 10 feet out into the playing field, um, in the way, but we had some dead trees that were also leaning pretty good. Along the parking lots there, we had a dead tree, us at the office here, and we had a dead tree in the playground down at Woodstock that was removed so that everything is back and safe. The Telstar High School softball scoreboard was finally installed, um, after sitting and waiting for a year for it to dry up enough and they still sank into the ditch even this summer after it hasn't rained in two months. But thanks to a lot of donated time and effort and equipment, um, we had two local businesses and, and people come in and really help our land and recruit people up with the right equipment, the lift. The last piece is to get the solar panels installed because it's a solar powered scoreboard with the generator backup. So that'll be nice, it's softball season, they'll finally have their working scoreboard. They've been patiently waiting. And then as, as usual, the custodians have just been very busy, touch up painting, doing all the cores, the rugs, cleaning the classrooms, getting everything inside ready. It was tricky for a while trying to make sure everything went dry with the humidity and the heat, the laps took a lot longer in places to do. The floor here was resurfaced and Crescent Parks is being done this week after being delayed a couple times to, for the gym floor, so all the spaces will be ready to go. So we're in really good shape in those regards and as people have asked, you know, we have relatively aging buildings. This building was built in 68. Crescent Park was built in the 50s and added on to in the early 90s and Woodstock was built in 86. And right now, based on the way the state sets up new building projects, we do not qualify for new school. We have not outgrown our facilities and we are not consolidating schools. So we have the, we have the responsibility to make sure we're maintaining what we have so that we can make sure we stay with them. So. Woodstock, we're going to have to be looking down the road in our capital improvement plan. There's no backup heat source and the boilers there are 30 years old and they're 25 to 35 years lifespan. So we need to look at an alternative backup source there. Same here, one of the boilers is giving the same situation, but the bigger problem in this building is the envelope. The yellow fiberglass, the single pane windows, all original. That needs to be addressed. And so is that those, when grants come up, are the things that we need to really go after and try to make sure that we can keep these buildings sustainable, but also efficient. The lighting project is hopefully going to start in the next month or so. And that'll be going through, as you approved last year, all of our school buildings will be converted over to smart LED lighting in every room in every facility. So all the classrooms and spaces can be programmable. They're all QR code run and teachers have zones that can do that. They also have smart technology that harvests lights, so when the brighter it is, the dimmer the lights get, and alternate out so that. So that they are using the cost savings over time to help pay for a loan that we take out for that. So there'll be a lot of projects still going on, but they are good investments into our school buildings to keep them functioning at the level that we want them to be at. And we are here for a long haul, so we've got to make sure we're putting our money where it goes best. You already did your board information sheets and committee reports, are working on those. Destiny has served the last two years on the Western Maine Regional Program of Exceptional Children down in Oxford. That is one of our special ed public schools that is run through SAD seventeen that we are cooperative with, along with Freiber. And we need to have a board member representative on that board as well and once a month. It's been eight thirty on a Monday morning. It was the fourth Monday of the month that is supposed to change. We don't have the meeting dates this year. The meetings usually last for an hour. And there are times if you can't drive down, but you can remotely go Google meets and remote in. But that is something that we attend once a month and work on. Up until last year, we've had a student in that program. A student moved out of district in seventeen, so we don't currently have anybody yet in the program down there. But we still are on community, we still have access to it. That is a program that works for, that is set up for grades seven through twelve. It's primarily mild behavior, autistic cases, but a variety of things for the best setting. Right now, there are twelve students and the max is fifteen that go to that school. And there are two teachers, three ed techs, a social worker and the administrator. So if you are interested or at all thinking about that, we do need to have somebody from the board step into that role. Destiny's not able to fill that now with her work schedule. So it'd be a commitment of once a month. I emailed again today to try and, so once I get that, I'll send out to everybody and that might help people make a decision. Because I haven't even, it's not on my calendar, it's not going to happen. So I gave you the handout for the WMEC, the Western Maine Education Collaborative. We are a member of that. David was one of the founding administrators who started that collaborative. There are seventeen districts who are part of that. And that is a huge PD resource that we are a part of for staff and for administrators with a lot of monthly meetings. They do conferences and workshops. We also are able to buy into the Drummond and Litsum suite of videos and every year, the annual bloodborne pathogens and HR safety network. We pay less than a hundred dollars for everyone to have access to that through Drummond and Litsum every year through the collaborative. They give us a set fee and depending how many schools sign up, everyone gets a portion of it. Versus Rob and I having to go through and create the videos and create the slideshows and do all the information, keep it updated every year. We're able to buy into that. One of the big projects coming up is the rendezvous in March. And that is a, it's on our workshop day in March in the calendar. That is a full workshop day for all the districts, for all staff to attend at U M F. And it is workshops all day long at all levels and all curriculum areas for people to go. They feed everybody and it's set up as a full day. And it's been five years since we've had the rendezvous up there. Kind of put a crinkle in that schedule a little bit. It went very well the last time and now they've settled that they're trying to do every five years to have time to build up. And they ask for the districts, for staff at each district to be the workshop presenters. So they bring in a couple of you from outside, but they try to make it all internal. So learning from each other, best practice type things. So it's a, it's a really great thing. I have two monthly meetings for that. Brian, Mr. Twitchels is on a couple of different committees and goes with that. The administrators have PD where they can meet monthly with all the other administrators in the area. And then there's a social work group. There's, like I said, the elementary principal, middle school principal, high school principal group. There's a curriculum directors group, there is a PD group. There's all sorts of different activities that they set up and do, they book studies. And it's a really easy thing to do. And because we're a member and we pay a flat rate as a district per student count, everything else after that is free to the staff. They don't pay, they don't pay anything, but the fee covers us for the year, which is pretty remarkable. And a lot of it, they try to do virtually to save travel. So it makes it easier zones spread out from here to uses in the between. So it's a pretty wide range. So that, and then I have one other thing, oh, I have two other things. August first is always the deadline for submissions from board chair. For those interested and willing to run for board chair, which you'll vote on next month when you do your board seats and selections. And I got one submission, so we have one nominee. So I'll make a really easy nominating process next month. Erin has agreed to be board chair again if you still vote her in, which is very much appreciated. She's doing a great job. I'll have her email and writing and here, so it's in the packet. And then the other questions come up recently. And this is not something I'm asking for a vote on tonight, but to have the question thrown out there for the administrators of all the different buildings and all the different levels and adulted as well, about groups who are now starting to ask, come and use the school facilities for different public meetings. And a lot of them are political groups, politically focused groups. And the concern is they want to know where the board stands as far as when groups come in and use the building and then information comes out, the group's in another meeting here, that the schools are being associated and tied into these things. What is your stance? And one of the things that any group who wants to use the building, they have to have liability insurance of their own. They have to have a policy. If they don't have that, then by board policy, they aren't able to rent spaces. When I say rent, the rent is, is twenty-five dollars. It's not, it's not anything we're making money on, but it's procedure and it's policy. They are just wondering where the board stands. If you're willing to discuss for a little bit about different activities that go on, different groups that come in and how you feel about the buildings being used for those types of gatherings. And so it's really just trying to get a sense of what the board thinks.
What's current policy?
There's, there's, there's no policy as far as limiting.
His board has not acted before, the superintendent hasn't created something?
There's not. There's nothing that's happened in the past.
I would worry if you're going to refuse people, like how do you come up with an appropriate? Like I, I would find the board getting more into trouble by being like, so yeah, we let. Like at what point do you decide that someone has enough political affiliation, I guess is what I mean. It's one thing if they're actually like, Oxford County again is one of me here. But if it's just like a, a group that someone sees as political, like I guess I don't. I, I guess that's what my worry is that.
How do you determine what's okay and not okay?
We always, we always allow it if there was one group, you couldn't say no to any group. And so it wasn't a question of picking or choosing, if this group's in, then you open up the gates and all rooms are in. So you either see they're going to be yes or no.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I feel like you sort of should be not allowed to be rented unless we're going to let everyone rent it.
Who's come up with the dollar amount? Twenty-five dollars to rent it for how long?
It depends on what the usage is and what they're asking for. So there's, in the paper when they fill it out, there are different rates depending on what they're trying to use and for how long. So I just, twenty-five dollars is one of the base fees. It can, I think, I think the most expensive is a hundred dollars. It's not the, my experience in the district is that they don't charge a whole lot because most groups are local and taxpayers already and don't try and charge them community spaces. They have to have their own insurance policy. There is a question on there if it's open to the public or not. Do they have to have an officer on duty type thing? There's a whole bunch of questions. And then those go to the building administrators who then go through and screen and figure out if they fill everything out that they need to use the spaces and if the space is available, that the calendar allows or not.
It's funny that odd.
It doesn't seem like it covers opening the doors.
Well, they, they have to pay addition, so there's a fee and then there's, they cover if they need to change their service, they have to pay for the time that the custodians come in. Some groups will choose to take care of their own trash and clean up and not have to pay a fee. It depends on what they're able to do and not do.
I find it odd, it comes up, the building's been here for years, community's ultimately stable. Is this a, is this a backdoor way to ban groups? I don't even wear a lot, a lot of usage, it seems it's all school related anyway. I don't know, I mean, Democrats, Republicans, they use the cafeteria for caucuses. That seems like a good, good place, but I don't know.
They have the pass, correct.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I, I'm not aware of any problems whatsoever. I would say just keep doing whatever you're doing, I mean, you put in writing, put something in writing. But with a, with a, with a ban to follow these, these folks with a lean towards a liberal use of the building. These buildings belong to the public. Fields, I think it's great, the fields are open. Some school districts, some states, they don't even let you use the fields. They keep you off the field, which I think is outrageous, but in the whole security mantra, that, that whole thing. So anyway, whatever you come up, Mark, I think that's my, that's my two cents. You've got some others and everybody's opinion, so thank you.
Where is the concern coming from?
It was coming from requests for this building that.
From these guys?
Were coming up.
This crowd.
For the ministry.
I don't mind saying I was one of the ones just questioning it, giving the knowledge of some of the groups and what they discussed. And worried about when you see things in the, in the public, you know, are they associating it to Telstar? That's what I'm just questioning. I don't want Telstar associated with some sort of roadblock or some sort of protest. What that's not what we're here for. We're not here to organize your, your protest in the community against something. You know, I don't want to see us as being in that light, not saying we have them. I wanted to see what you guys thought. And then just if Terry doesn't mind, Terry came to me with the same concern about another group that she was concerned saying, hey, is this okay? And I'm like, yes, we're a public, we're a public school, we're open, we have this set up. And if it's available and they have these criteria, like Mark said, then we use it. But let's ask the board how they feel about that. That's something that we've never asked and we've never visited that. And given, given all the political turmoil of the day, I think it's worthy of a discussion to know how you all feel about that. That's all.
If I can just continue to comment a little bit on that. From my perspective, I, I would want someone to be engaged in sort of a classroom, educational. You know, they're not coming to me asking for, just to use the building at random. They're asking to use it for educational purposes. And I just wondered if there was some parameters around that, like rules as to, like you just said, they have to be open to the public. Those sorts of things that I want to be able to say to the people who are coming to ask about classes that might have a, a political undercurrents. So just to have some.
You mean for adult, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that was the, I appreciate you saying right there. You like the liberal open policy and that's what I wanted to hear. If that's the consensus, great, we continue with what we're doing and that's fine. I just wanted the board to know that, you know, we, we as a school have no association with any of these groups that have meetings here and what they do out in the public has no relation to Telstar, so that's all.
Does it, don't it have, like, do we have something written of like what crosses the line and what we wouldn't offer?
No, and I, and I, so we would of course have, anything would be open to the public. Or it's sort of senior college, but you're restricted to board members, to the members only, things like that. But all political views would be welcomed, those sort of, that sort of language would be encouraged in the write-up of anything that we put in there. And that's certainly what the person that came to me said, but that person is coming from one political. And she was, you know, I don't know how you feel about this. And I said, well, I actually don't know how we do either. So I want to make sure that, like John's saying, that it's not seen publicly as if we were picking a side and focusing on that and, and not including the other side as long as the language is right.
Because one group might come over and have, have that, and then the other group says, hey, that, that's not what we believe. Why aren't you letting us? Well, we are letting you have a meeting, you didn't ask them. They did.
Right, right.
You know, that type of, I don't want to get into all that stuff.
I think we live in a town where like the library isn't large enough and accessible to have any meeting spaces. Our town hall does not have much meeting space. Like I think if we closed like the school, I mean, not only is it a public building, but also just, I almost feel like in light of political turmoil and anything to like turn around and like close the doors of the school, would, I would feel very strongly against that. You know, I mean, unless we find ourselves in an actual problem, but it seems like the school is the asset we have to help build community as opposed to, you know, separate it.
So it goes along with our, our new sign up here, not only to students, but it's the community too. All are welcome here. And that's our motto, all are welcome here. And that's what we're going to build with. Unless I get different from the school board or keep everything different, the same, and just continue to monitor. I really appreciate your input.
And what's the process if something builds a riot, I mean, like do we add and reassess and come up with some, you know?
We can always address something. When people use accountability forms, we're not necessarily present. They use the building, they get access, but then, you know, they're not, somebody's not sitting here with them, the whole thing. So it would be something that if, as with any situation, if it is followed afterwards, we'd have to address it and then see if I can readjust or not. It's, it's hard to know, there's too many what ifs and unknowns for things like that. So just, there's more just trying to make sure that everyone's on a similar page. I just want to make sure that they have a backbone support just to know what they're standing.
I would close with the, making sure, point out the Mr. Kenny's banner they worked hard on. I'm very proud of that banner. Okay, we have another one put up. It's nice, it came off.
I'm in favor of either everybody or nobody. And unfortunately, I feel like the public opinion usually comes uneducated. And that's not ours, unfortunately.
Again, thank you all.
Thank you for, for reaching out for our feedback and bringing us such fantastic answers.
Can I conclude my report?
Thank you, honey. We do not have any old business to tend to this evening, so move on to new business. And as far as I'm aware, we don't put any adjustments to the agenda. We'll move on to number three, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of the superintendent's selection of the following teachers through a first probationary contract for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Sam Anibal.
Thank you.
For TMS PE health teacher. Levi Armandy for TMS Special Education Life Schools teacher. And Robin Norway, Elementary K through five music teacher. Do I have a motion?
So move, move the group.
In a second. In just a second. Now we can open the floor for discussion and for time for you to, to review the information that impacts around.
So your packets are multipurpose tonight. This is a packet for the entire evening. At the end of the round of different positions, we'll collect them all back. But you've got the first reading of packet of the three teaching positions. Back in June, you gave me the ability to hire during the summertime and then bring these to you tonight because they are teaching positions, all going into a first probationary contract for this school year. These positions were filled, well, two of them were filled back in June and then our music teacher was more recently. But the fact that they all come with varying levels of experience and the fact we were able to fill these positions, in particular, our music teacher coming over with thirty years of teaching experience, doing music. Never thought that would just fall into our lap, which is a great thing. So. If there's any questions, in particular, it's a lot to just skim through and digest really quickly, but.
Comments on certification, I always ask.
Yep, so the. It doesn't come to you without at least having a conditional or full certification.
When does conditional become full?
Conditional, they have up to three years, depending on, if they get done sooner, they get done sooner, but they have up to three years to fulfill that. The only conditional here is our middle school president teacher, president health. The only conditional here is our middle school phys ed teacher, phys ed help. They have not, they had to get conditional for help and phys ed. They have been working in, um, kind of like the Bryant-Pon system. They were working through a main extension, outdoor leadership, outdoor skills. And so had since as a phys ed teacher, this will be first under phys ed and help. But already enrolled in courses to get that taken care of. Moving here from the Gama Strata area. And very much into outdoor PE, outdoor skills. Fits a lot with our TFA program. And trying to introduce some new units and some new things for the middle school phys ed program. So Sam's also very excited, will try to use the mountain bike, mountain bike trails all back and other things we have to go on site with our kids, not just do the traditional things in the gym and try to meet the needs of all the students. Levi has been a special ed teacher previously. And as I said, Robin, um, last year was teaching in Lisbon, but previously was last teaching. And so comes was over 30 years of teaching music from K-12, the whole year, probably through instrumental, general and call.
This person just showed up.
They, they moved, they moved here two years ago. And they were living down the road, west, down, oh, half our way. They found a job in, in Lisbon and then learned about this job being closer and was very excited to not have a commute and to be working at elementary level.
Great. We'll act as.
Yeah, we'll take it, we'll take it.
Has everyone had enough time to read those three packets? Have there been any questions?
I know we're like, talking about this, like it would like Genie leaving? And like, was this one of the people, like, I feel like Genie had people she wanted to hire for these positions. That's what it seems like, at least when we were pitched the budget. Like, is this, so it's the special ed?
That's a later, that's a later, yeah.
Any other questions at all?
No, isn't this Levi person's special ed teacher? Am I not understanding?
Yes, he's special ed teacher.
Yeah, is this just like someone that we found after that? Or was it one of the people that Genie's been excited about hiring?
Yes, these were all hired way back in June. So that's one of the ones that Genie hired back with the budget. Once the budget passed.
That's what I was asking.
Fill those positions, yes. Sorry.
Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of Sam Hannibal, Levi Armandy and Robin Northway for first probationary contract for 25-26 school year? Thank you, Tanmas. Number four, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the approval of the updated region nine cooperative agreement.
You can hold your packets for now, we'll come back in a little bit. Um, the region nine cooperative agreements, uh, had to go to all three. Send these to the boards to be approved. You can, we'll leave a copy of the packets later on the floor. Um, you have the agreement in your packet that came out from Robin for the agenda. Um, the highlights on the digital version of the agreement that you were in yellow were some of the changes. A lot of it stemmed around the credits awarded that the schools have been working on for the last seven plus years to figure out how to find more academic credit value in the courses. In region nine, that was not in the cooperative agreement. So if the boards, if each of our three boards approve, then it'll go back to region nine to do a final draft of that agreement and then we'll have it in writing. So this is just an initial, do you, as a board, agree with the cooperative agreement as written and some of the edits that were in yellow? And those are things we talked about the last year or two with you, that guidance and curriculum we're working on and trying to make sure that when our kids are going to region nine, that the academic value is there and not just elective credits and allows them to come back here on their other days and get the courses that they need. And not trying to double up on classes and trying to make sure that they, they get their graduation credits in, but also trying to make sure that kids view region nine as a pathway that's open to all kids and not just a certain group of kids that anyone can go and still balance their schedule to have the classes they want and need to try these different experiences out. Very minor change, the agreement hasn't been updated in a few years. And so this is a process need all of us, um, to go through. But it really is just if you agree to, a little bit in yellow and the edits there, then it'll go back to the region nine board with our approval. And we'll wait and see what RSC 10 and 56 put through for theirs. And then they'll come back to the full, um, full board for region nine.
I'm sorry, that oversight was curriculum coordinator oversees, like, um, the credits being developed?
So the curriculum director and the building principals all worked on it together in conjunction and spent many meetings going through. And each of the teachers at region nine, each program presented their program to the committee of all those people, trying to explain what standards they're covering, what standards they'd like to cover, asking for input as to if you, I want to give a quarter credit of math for this class, what do I need to be able to do that? And they really work together collaboratively to try and make sure for the most part that every kid is getting the similar credits, no matter what school they went to. It's not exact because there are different graduation standards each of the schools. Um, but it's much more aligned. And the idea was that it's more academic credits now than elective. There's still elective credits involved, but before it was very elective credit heavy and very little academic credit given. So just trying to put that, that title over there.
Before we begin to carry on more discussion, do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, no worries. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Scott. And then go right ahead, open the floor for discussion.
I, I just had, I didn't, you were missing me, and I don't have it here. I thought that's okay. Um, do you think it's fair, Mark? I don't, I'll take, you read it? You evolve. Do you think it's fair to evolve?
I think it matches what we're doing, the practice we're doing.
That guy wanted to hear that.
It just has it in writing now that formalizes it and updates it. So it matches the practice. That was the big thing and it didn't really match. Last year, we go through our own graduation policies and different things. It wasn't matching because of the changes and edits, so.
And sometimes it is just like a minor adjustment with, you know, we're pretty much doing it, but in order for, it has to be a research component in order for it to count in BLA or whatever it is. So a lot of times it's not a big overhaul. It's just adding a certain component to it to make it credit worthy.
Any other comments or questions at all? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the updated union cooperative agreement? Thank you, Tanmas. Number five, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the approval of the superintendent's recognition of Ross Chippin?
Chippin.
Chippin, thank you, for directors of services.
Motion to approve recommendations.
We'll open up the floor for discussion and you have this information in your packet for this candidate.
So Ross comes from RSC 10. He was previously stolen from RSC 10 to fill a different role. But then when Mrs. Cordiero decided to move on to a different job and open the position up in August, he was one of two candidates. We had two excellent candidates, both internal for the position, and it was not an easy decision for the committee to go through. Um, I never thought we'd have one really good option, but to have two options in August is rare. But comes, Ross was very highly recommended. He was previously the assistant director in RSC 10 and covered all the middle school and high school components. Essentially the director of those levels and working under Deb. So has had a lot of training, a lot of background. And comes enthusiastically ready and fully guiding him. And we, under Genie's leadership, are in a really good place and really ready the ship and really, really put us in a direction going forward where special ed is in a good place. And so now the job is to fine tune that work and really go to the next level. And, um, we are poised for that and very fortunate, so. And you can see from his packet, there's a variety of background experiences, all levels of regular, it's special ed, administrative backgrounds. And so has a perspective from all the different angles and can, and is, you know, is going to be side by side with the teachers as they're going through this and working with them and supporting them in the classrooms and so. And not to embarrass him, but he is here tonight if you want to, if you don't mind. Put a name to a face.
I'm very grateful and sad to hear that Genie's leaving.
Yeah, it was, it was a tough walk, but we're going to be okay.
Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of Ross Chippin for director of special services? Thank you, Tanmas.
Congratulations.
Right. Number six, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the approval of the superintendent's recognition of Erica Fujimaki for the WS teaching for the school position.
One more question?
Destiny, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Open the floor for discussion. And again, you have your information in your packet.
I'll say that Erica is wonderful. Um, she already knows our school, she already knows our kids. I can't hate a better candidate for this position, so I recommend that.
We have another example of being able to grow from within and bring someone up through the ranks who already played an essential role at Woodstock and was the acting administrator on duty as needed, the backup or the first, first in command after Beth was not available or was busy. So she's played all the different roles at Woodstock, taught multiple grade levels, won all the hats, um, and really has the respect of the staff and the students. Um, cares about the building and the kids, is a fierce advocate for the building. Um, I know she can work for the PTA. But wants to be, wants to be in that building, wants to see that building succeed and continue the work that they're doing, supporting her staff to do so. She's in her final year of finishing her full, um, program for administration. Um, she was already lined up to do some interning this year with all the building administrators and we're going to be able to continue to do that. So she'll be able to get out and observe and shadow all the administrators and all the buildings while in this role. Um, she'll take on the title one duties that Beth was doing previously. Um, so allows her to see a little bit of everything, which isn't always possible coming into a role like this and to help foster that for her. So she is here as well tonight, Erica. Ms. Fuji is a mostly colored at Woodstock. Um, but Erica has also been the key de-escalator in safety care training down at Woodstock. She's the one that gets called in for every time there's a crisis or an issue. She is the, the steady, consistent disciplinarian. The kids know where things stand. It's black and white, which is not a bad thing. It's consistent, it's tough love with love, um, which is what I'll mention. Um, and they all know that. And so, um, this just now allows her to do it all the time. So, and it takes a little bit of pressure off trying to be pulled from her classroom to do that as well, which is never easy to do. Um, it's hard for her and for her students. So, um, I know that the, the staff is excited. I know she's excited. She's already diving in and chomping through everything, scramble, trying to get caught up to speed. Just have to make sure that she sleeps. We're going to work on that, but it's going to be a good thing. We're very fortunate. We had two very good candidates. We didn't think that we would get the two, the internal and external. And, um, we picked the right one, so we're very lucky.
And any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of Erica Fujimaki for the WS teaching for the school position? Thank you, Tanmas.
If you can send your packets back down to me?
And move on to number seven, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of the appointment of John Elliott Jr. as a affirmative action officer for 25-26 school year. It was cited at $15,000. Thank you, Destiny.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Discussion.
He is currently in this position?
He is, yes. And going through update training with Drummond Woodson for affirmative action, title nine and all the components of him in the role, so.
What's the training cost? What does Drummond Woodson charge for that? Shine him up?
Uh, it is similar to the other, I think it's three inch chains, 300 inch chains, like the other, like most of the workshops.
Billable hour?
Yeah, it's a, it's a whole day workshop. He'll attend.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of John Elliott Jr. as a affirmative action officer for 25-26? Thank you, Tanmas. Number eight, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the nomination and selection of an MSAD 44 board representative to the WMR BEC board in Oxford.
Most approve?
Well, I would.
One to the base.
I would be helpful.
And we don't have to be leaders currently, so I know that obviously we would like people to say that if there's anybody that's eager to, to jump into that role right now, we could, you know, make the nomination a motion or we can table this until we have more information.
Make the motion to table it till we have all the information?
That's what I'm about. Thank you. Any discussion on tabling the motion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of tabling the motion until further date, until further information? Thank you, Tanmas. Number nine, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the appointment of a delegate in alternate to the MSAD annual delegate assembly. Be assumed scheduled for October 18, 2025. Destiny volunteered to be the delegate. Do we have an alternate?
What was that?
It's a Saturday morning, 9:30 zone.
And is it the Thursday, Friday or that? No.
It is a Thursday.
You don't have to think that as though.
That's an optional one of the, one on Saturday morning is the, yeah, it's Thursday.
Gotcha. Well, Thursdays optional, I'll go in as the alternate if you want. I can't do Thursdays, but I could do the Saturday if maybe. Unless I need to actually.
I don't think they're going to beat you down.
No, I don't think so either. So those two meetings, your consideration, would you like to take, make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve Destiny as the delegate and Erin as the alternate.
Thanks. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving Destiny as the delegate and myself as the alternate for the assembly? Tanmas, thank you. Number 10, to see what action the board wishes to take in regards to the approval to join a national mass action mitigation, our power school breach information breach experienced in December of 2024? Do I have a motion? Any second? Discussion.
See your board packet, there were three different packets of information about this lawsuit. Um, this is more of a proactive, cover yourself and say something 10 or 15 years down the road comes up to happen, that we would be part of this, uh, international lawsuit, um, against power school for the data breach that we did experience back in December. Unlike a lot of districts, we're infants in this whole process and a lot of law. Unlike a lot of districts, we're infants in this whole process, and not a lot of personal information got out. There was, we don't collect social security numbers, we don't have anything like that in Power School. There were some mailing addresses, some birth dates that might have gotten out for both staff and students. And they've offered identity security protection for those in the meantime, in the short term, for three years. We're not even sure if this, how, when this timeline will come to fruition, but this at least gets us in that if something were to happen, the district would have protection if somebody were to come back down the line and claim that information got out, and this was a cost.
From what I understand, does it cost us anything? There's no real downside to it?
And that's the reason we bring it forward, that we have no real skin in the game as far as, it doesn't cost anything, win or lose. It offers us protection if needed, potentially. But if nothing comes to permit, and we have nothing, go forward on it, so it's more just having it on the hook to be there.
Scott.
A couple of, first of all, is there a cover letter in this, Mark? Something must have come with a cover letter, we were provided that.
Those were attachments that came, I'll have to go back.
There's no way, there's no big picture thing, I get, I get it, but this, this is like the beginning of the court filing here. It's also dated March fifth, so it's not March fifth, I didn't know why it's, you know, I don't know, it's been sitting around for a while, or you just get it in the mail, or?
We got it back then, but we were trying to decide to debate if we were even gonna go forward with it, and then.
Who's "we"?
Brian and I were talking about it, bringing it to the board, and then trying to learn more about it, so we actually had an understanding of what it was. And nothing's been filed yet on the court level, just trying to gather and see who was gonna join in.
Do you know our deadline to respond either way, is there such a thing for the deadline?
I'd have to check, I don't know if something happened.
For me, I'm gonna, I think we're gonna table it for information, but on the other hand, if we vote it, I'll vote no, so that's what I'm thinking.
Any other discussion, questions?
Do we know what, say, this lawsuit is to win? What are they looking for?
It'll be covered damages, it's a somebody that has sued.
But again, it doesn't cost anything.
It was not, they're not asking us to.
Upfront, but there are, upon signing this, we are signing, saying that if there were fees involved, we are saying we'd pay them. If things did come up, we are saying we are responsible for it. We are saying if there was a proceeding, they would get thirty percent of it if there was something that became protection of it. So I mean, there, there's a lot of legal.
But that would be a portion of money that we would be receiving as a result of the lawsuit.
And right, it does say that it wouldn't come out of public fees, and it does, I'm also gonna vote no against that coming, now that I work here.
Anything Drummond Woodson on this, or any comments, aware of this, Drummond Woodson? Is there another firm maybe available, a troll that says you guys, I don't know, a troll, deliver money, that's what they talk about money, told me about money.
It's an, it's an international, there's, they have cases, it covers the U S and Canada and other areas and territories, so. I can send it to Drummond if you would like, to get their opinion, they don't have a stake in it necessarily, but they are our advisory counsel, so.
They're our lawyers, I just, okay, I, I talk about.
Is it like Brian or your opinion that we should? I feel like you guys are the ones that know the most about Power School and what the breach and all this, is this coming to us because you want us to produce pain?
So this came, I first got the information from the Power School user group in the state of Maine. And it came as a forwarded email and links and a video, it's an hour-long video, which I watched through. We have virtually zero cost involved that we would get paid back. There are districts that, for example, who have used Power School for twenty years, who started off collecting social security numbers. So that becomes a more quantifiable exposure. The issue that I see, and on the video, the lawyer talking about was very emphatic, that it includes indemnification. They will not settle for anything unless, which means if there is a lawsuit targeted at our district, and I, you know, I don't think it's likely, I'll be honest. But if there is, that Power School has said they cover all the costs, that's the indemnification. So we are not open to an exposure in ten or fifteen years if something comes back around. And that's where I looked at it and I said, I think that's worth something. I don't think we're gonna be hit for money, per se, I don't think we would get a, any money out of this action.
You got an hour to do it. You got an hour, you've already got an hour into it, that's your problem.
No, 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 you're kidding, we're paying them, right?
No, I know.
So with that, you're, uh.
But, but the indemnification, I think, was worth some strong consideration.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval to join a national mass action litigation against Power School for taking some information breach experience in November twenty twenty-four? All of those opposed? And the motion passes with seven approval? Thank you. Number eleven, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of the superintendent's recommendation of district for the leaders for the twenty-five, twenty-two school year. K through five E L A, Kuzahames, K through five math, Samantha Grasso. K through five social studies, Karen Fuya. Six through twelve math, Dave Lynch. Six through eight E L A, Lori Davis. Six through eight social studies, Duchess Thelum. Six through eight science, Kate Herden. Nine through twelve E L A, Melissa Poston. Nine through twelve social studies, Dave Leclerc. Nine through twelve science, Elka Blas. K through five specialist, Ashley Barbrick. And six through twelve specialist, Tara Engleman. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved, any day, one.
Thank you, Tiamis, and a second, and Destiny, discussion.
All these individuals solidly scheduled to be, for their stipend, they'll be leading the curriculum meeting once a month. They'll be meeting with Mr. Prichol once a month besides that, to make sure that they are working on common rules and directions. And this year, based on the T V negotiations, they are also available as instructional coaches to staff and to administrators as part of the observation process. When it changes, being content area experts. They are not part of a formal observation, they are there as a coaching role to help somebody if they have a low score or don't do well in a certain area, to get help and coaching, to then come back again to try and improve their score. They're also there to help with assessments, especially in their content focus. That's an increase in change for the last year. Because almost all these people were in the role last year. There's a couple new changes, but for the most part, they are able to do it.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of the curriculum director's recommendation for persons listed for the twenty-five, twenty-two school year? Thank you, Tiamis. Number twelve, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the approval of the district's safety plans for the twenty-five, twenty-two school year? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Destiny, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Destiny. Discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of the district's safety plans for the twenty-five, twenty-two school year? Thank you, Tiamis. And number thirteen, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding entering into an executive session for a personnel matter. Section one, M R S A, four, five, six, do I have a motion? And a second, thank you, Scott, any discussion? All of those in favor of entering into an executive session for a personnel matter? Thank you, Tiamis, and I'll take a very brief recess for all the public to exit the room. Thank you, everyone.